Welcome, everyone, to the Township Planning Board Public Meeting, February 7th, 2019. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Please note that this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Weinstein, Ted, Mayor Dalek, Moore, Peason?
Here.
Schoa?
Here.
Mr. Hashtag?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Miniman Lepati?
Here.
Vice Chair Julian?
Here.
Chair Sarachi?
Here.
First up is consideration or approval of meeting minutes. First up, January, the reorganizational meeting minutes of January 10th. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
All members eligible but Mr. Peason.
Okay, roll call, please.
Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next is approval of the January 10th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Same group.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes, we don't have any considerations or resolutions this evening. We do have some planning board business.
Can I introduce our new engineer?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board with us tonight in the audience observing is our new board engineer from T&amp;M Associates, his name Bob Yoro. Would you welcome Bob?
Welcome, Bob.
Welcome.
I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Yeah. All right.
First up, we have the resignation of Sally Bekareina from Seat 7. Eric, do we need to do formally accept her resignation?
Well, if the board wishes to acknowledge her seat, it's the same they may.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Sally for her years of service to the board and wish her well as a new mother in that job, which will obviously take a lot longer and more time. But thank you, Sally, for being on the board.
Thank you. And I would also like to recognize Sally's years of service here. I know we worked with her for quite a number of years and she will be missed, but hopefully we will see her around in the near future. Okay, next, we have a resolution for the alternate engineer position.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, originally the board had appointed suburban engineers as the alternate. It has come to light, however, that they have a conflict, so they're stepping down from that position. The suggestion is that you just appoint the two remaining firms that had applied. It would be Bank III Engineering and Brightview Engineering.
Okay. Do I need a motion, Eric?
Yeah, you need a motion, second, to approve both resolutions, appointing Bank III Engineering and Brightview Engineering.
Okay. So may I have a motion to approve said named alternate engineering firms?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any additional comments from the dais, from the floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Peason?
Yes.
Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, resolution for the planning board professionals, their agreements, contracts. I know that, I believe we had a resolution approving them at the reorg, so this is now just approval, formal approval of their contracts, so may I have a motion?
I'll move that, Chair.
I'll second.
Okay, any comments from the dais, floor, roll call, please.
Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, and this is an interesting one, how life takes some twists, we have a resolution to extend a professional services agreement with Mazer to complete some ongoing projects that they're in the middle of.
Correct. This just authorizes them under the same fee schedule that they had last year. There were obviously certain applications that started last year, months ago, and it just allows them to finish those applications out.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any additional comments from the dais, from the floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Next, we have a, an extension request for signature detailing. Mr. Maskey, or Eric?
Yeah, you have, you have an extension request to allow them to extend the time of decision through March 8th, which happens to coincide with the fact they are supposed to be on your agenda from March the 7th.
Just happens to work out.
Obviously, you all have to hope that the weather behaves itself on March the 7th.
Okay. Is this their first extension?
Motion to grant an extinction on the time of decision for signature detailing, SAI, Mealsex Farms LP, 18 PB08 SPCU Block 142 Lot 34 through March 8th, 2019.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any additional comments from the dais, floor, roll call, please.
Peason?
Yes.
Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. And last item, hopefully everyone has received it, the 2018 Board of Adjustment Annual Report. Do we need to take any formal motion or just recognize?
Basically, a motion to accept the report.
Okay. I have a motion to accept the Board of Adjustment's 2018 report.
So move, Mr. Chairman, to accept the annual adjustment, Board of Adjustment report.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any additional comments from the dais, floor, roll call, please.
Peason?
Yes.
Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. This time, we'll take any, anyone that may have business from the floor on items not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to consideration of ordinances. The Township Committee has referred to us for comment and review, Ordinance 2019-02. It's a review of design and performance standards for solar energy systems and small wind energy systems. I believe the revision is for further allowance or usage on public lands. Mr. Maskey, you have anything additional?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chairman. It is a fairly simple ordinance amendment. Let me grab my notes. It's a clarification of an existing ordinance regarding solar facilities. Right now, the ordinance permits them in conjunction with residential, commercial, and industrial buildings. So by omission, if you will, it's not permitted in any other type of building. In other words, public buildings would not be permitted to have a solar facility under this ordinance. So this adds an additional paragraph which explicitly allows it on publicly owned property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out something in reference to the ordinance. It's also going to enhance our master plan that we were working on last year. And the master plan changes the item number seven, green buildings, and environmental sustainability plan element, so it should help enhance that as well. I just wanted to take a second and point that out.
Good, thank you. Any additional comments? So, do we have to make a formal recommendation?
Recommend back to the township committee?
Back, as is.
It's a, it's a motion, Mr. Chairman, for the planning board to approve, to accept and approve Ordinance 2019-02 and refer it back to the Township Committee for second reading.
Okay, thank you. So, do I have any motion, as stated by Eric?
I'm making a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the dais, from the floor, seeing none, roll call, please.
Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Schoa?
Yes.
Mr. Hashtag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Miniman Lepati?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Thank you. Now, next up, applications, and that's what I think the majority that are in this room for tonight. It's an informal review of preliminary and final major site plans. The project is, or the applicant is Three Ronson LLC, Hillsborough Center Residential. The file number is 18 PB16 INF, Block 210, lots 5.01 and 5.02, otherwise commonly known as 645 Route 206 in Hillsborough. And just for the, for the, for the board's information, per our town center ordinance, informal hearings are required, you know, for an applicant before formally filing, so...
Just one other thing to add to that, Mr. Chairman, because this is an informal hearing, nothing that the board says and/or the applicant is binding at this point.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, even though it's informal, I'm Donna Jennings with a law firm, Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer. I represent the applicant. What's the matter, broken?
We don't have the best sound system, so...
Is that better?
Yeah, it goes to the camera.
The man with the camera is the only one we have to really keep happy.
Okay, excellent. In any event, we're here for an informal. This is respect to a new building that will go on the existing shopping center. It is part of your affordable housing obligation. It's a 44-unit rental apartment. It'll have 25% set aside, so 11 of the units are set aside for low and moderate income families. We have two review letters that we have received so far, even though it is an informal, so we have one from T&amp;M that is dated January 28th, and one from Mr. Maskey that is dated January 30th. I've brought with me two of our witnesses, our site engineer and architect, so they can kind of give you guys an overview of what the applicant proposes, and then we want to address some of the comments that are in these reports, and then really get a little bit of feedback from you to see, you know, what you like about the project, if there's some issue with the project that you want to see changed, et cetera. But we're very proud of the project, we think you're going to really like it. It's a nice addition to this facility. My clients bought that shopping center about two years ago, it was completely depressed, it was empty, it's now all full. The last major piece in that one is we got a used variance from the zoning board for a vet hospital that'll be going up in that last portion by the grocery store. The Chipotle's there now, the Starbucks there now. It's very active and vibrant, and I think something that the township should be very pleased with. And so this is now a new component. It'll take over that daycare facility building that's just sitting there vacant, it's the last vacant piece, that'll come down, and this building will go up. And so if I could have Tom, why don't you come on up first? And Tom is our site engineer, and he's just going to kind of give you an overview of the proposed site plan and how we address some of the comments that Mr. Maskey has in his report.
Is that working?
Do you want me to hand that out?
Yeah.
Just for the record, if you can...
Sure. Tom Decker from Van Cleef Engineering, licensed professional engineer. Okay, all right. The site, and I'm going to move over to the board so I can point some things out for the board. What is being distributed is a reduced copy of the board in front of us. This is slightly different than you may have received in your packets. I've spoken with Dave Maskey and with the client, with the applicant, our client, we've made some minor revisions to the plan that was originally submitted. To get the board oriented, this is 206, Route 206 is on the left-hand side to the west of the project. North is up. The parking area is to the east with Shoprite to the north, Amwell Road further up, and then this is the old Stop &amp; Shop complex. We were at the, at the board a few years ago for the Starbucks. That's been installed, that's been constructed and has been very successful. And right now, what we're doing is a 44-unit residential apartment complex in the northeast portion of the site. Currently, there is an office building there, which will be demolished as part of this application, and constructed will be the 44-unit apartment complex. The architect can speak more to the building itself and its layout, height, and so forth. What you have shown is the building, parking to the northeast, and the sidewalk system around the building, and then you'll also see on the western side or the left side of the exhibit, there are some additional yellow highlighted sidewalks that will be added. So, we can talk about pedestrian access because I know that that was something that Mr. Maskey had a concern about. We'll have the sidewalks around the building itself, there'll be a courtyard in the middle, there will be landscaping, and that will be provided a time of site plan. We have existing sidewalks along the retail to the north and the grocery store and our supermarket and the vet hospital that will be going in, we have a sidewalk system there. When we put in Starbucks, we had connected via a sidewalk through the islands with crosswalks and so forth, a connection, pedestrian connection from Starbucks to the supermarket. So, that enabled, that connected that portion of the site. One of the things that Mr. Maskey had identified, and this was on an earlier concept that had been presented as part of the ordinance for this zone, is to provide some connectivity for the rest of the shopping center, and to provide that connectivity out to 206. So what we're proposing is to modify the landscaped islands to the west, make them a little bit wider, put in a sidewalk within those islands with crosswalks as shown, so that will connect Starbucks to the end of the end unit for the retail to the north, currently occupied by Chipotle. That essentially gives us a circulation around the parking lot, it'll be signed accordingly with traffic signs, and then we're proposing a connection from the northwest corner of the retail across and eventually tying into the controlled intersection shared at the driveway that crosses into the Bottle King parking lot, and then just before that goes into Shoprite, Nelson's Corner to the north. We still have some engineering to do with that, but that's currently our anticipated route, which will allow the residents in the apartment complex to not only access all of the retail uses in the complex by foot, but to also access the controlled intersection and cross 206 or walk to the north of 206 and to Nelson's, Nelson Center. With regards to parking, the dark gray area to the northeast, the upper right, we're reconfiguring that area. We're staying within the limits of the existing impervious, so there's already parking and asphalt back here. There are some slight modifications to that, where we're putting in some pavement where there was grass previously and putting grass in where there was pavement. But we have a, our impervious coverage will not exceed what was originally approved for this overall complex when it was approved back in the 80s. So, we will not need any stormwater management measures or anything like that, we're not increasing the impervious. We're just rerouting the parking and drives. There were some, some questions in the professionals' letters with regards to the parking. We are required to have 85 parking spaces for the 44 units. And we've made some adjustments on this exhibit from what was originally submitted in your packets to attempt to address some of the concerns. What we've been able to do is we've added in, picked up a couple of parking spaces in the northeast. We're going to have to put in some retaining walls because there is some, some great difference between this access drive to the north and our existing access drive, but we can make that work with the retaining wall. We've also adjusted the ADA parking spaces in the north, northeast, northwest portion of that parking area, and then we've also taken a look at the parking area behind what will be the veterinarian hospital. When the veterinarian hospital came in, there were 15 parking spaces dedicated to employee parking. We have three remaining spaces in that area, which would be used for the apartment complex. In total, in that back area, we have 45 non-ADA parking spaces, which will allow for each one of the units to have at least one assigned parking space. In addition to the surface parking, there are also 12 garages. So, there will be units that will have both a surface parking space that is also located in front of a garage, so they would get two spaces. So, in all total, to the rear, we have 59 parking spaces, including garages, the 45 surface parking spaces, and two ADA compliant parking spaces. The balance, the remaining 26 spaces would be picked up in the, in the general parking area for the shopping center. Overall, for the total site, we are required to have 340 parking spaces, and we have 359. So we are 19 spaces in the positive.
So, the parking spaces that you're borrowing from the front parking area, so to speak, are those available based on the calculations that are needed for the retail?
Yes. Yes, the requirement for the 340 spaces includes all the retail, the veterinarian hospital, the supermarket...
Starbucks, the bank...
The Starbucks, the bank, everything. That's 340 spaces, and we provide 359.
Does the, did the imperviousness change because of the difference in zoning, because of the town center, or they get grandfathered in under the old zone for the imperviousness?
Well, as far as, as far as the permitted impervious, the zone permits 85% maximum impervious coverage.
That's under the new town center zone?
That's under the new, that's correct.
What was the old one, then?
To be honest with you, I don't know. I can tell you that currently, after the Starbucks construction, we are at 46.75%. So we're less than, less than 50%. When the complex was originally designed, it had 47.5%. So we're still, we went from 47.5 when it was originally constructed to 46.75 after Starbucks, and now we're at 46.96. So we're still below that 45.
Okay. Thank you. Eighty-five. Yeah.
Yeah, and we're well below the 85. But I'm comparing what was done previously because as long as we stay within the original designed impervious coverage, it doesn't trigger any additional stormwater management because we're not increasing our impervious coverage.
I mean, there was, there was parking lots there anyway, I guess is what you're saying.
Correct. This, this whole area was either occupied by the building or a parking lot, and we're just basically reconfiguring that space.
Okay.
So essentially, if the residents have two vehicles, I mean, they're going to wind up having to park in that middle area, and I'm not looking at really great foot traffic for them to, you know, get into their, you know, into the apartment complex there. You have one crosswalk there, but kind of cutting across the parking lot, they're going to be forced to walk across the parking lot. I don't know if there's a way to maybe have some, if those islands there can be cross-connected to, or...
Which islands?
Or maybe the ones to the east there.
In here?
Yeah.
There's, as part of, as part of the veterinarian hospital application, we did include an additional crosswalk and sidewalk.
Right, I see that up there. But I'm just saying that that's the only access for the, you know, for the residents are going to have to meander their way over there, and, and if most of the parking spaces are, you know, during the retail hours, the ones that are closest to the buildings are going to be filled, so they're going to be...
Unfortunately, we, the constraints that we have is, this area up here to the northeast is a detention basin, so we can't, we can't project any further to the, to the northeast with our improvements. Similarly, as we work our way around, we start getting into more environmentally sensitive areas to the east, so we can't, we're really confined by...
Right. No, I understand it. I'm just wondering maybe, you know, between, because actually I see this in a shopping complex down South Jersey that I wind up going to. You know, between the veterinary hospital and the grocery store, it creates a very wide walkway, or, you know, marked walkway.
In here?
Mm-hmm. Because, because they, I don't know if you're familiar with Down and Del Ran on Route 130, there, there's a target, and they have, you know, pretty much, I don't know, maybe about a third of the frontage of the target is a walkway to allow pedestrians to cross, and I'm just thinking that that might make it a little bit easier for those that are not going to be able to park anywhere near that crosswalk that's up in the northeast corner there.
You mean to widen the sidewalk in here?
Somewhere near, yeah, to bring it... Whether or not to widen the sidewalk, I'm just saying just to create a marked pedestrian crosswalk.
Well, we can certainly, you know, we can certainly take a look at how wide that is when we come in for a site plan and give you dimensions, see if you have an idea of how wide this area is. You know, we also have, you know, this parking, this site...
Lost your mic.
No.
Yeah, Tom, could you address the reserved parking in the front row? The row of parking that's parallel to where the building that the Chipotle is in, the more northern part of the shopping center, of those roughly 24 spaces, 10 are reserved and another four handicap spaces. Four are Chipotle, it's for 15-minute parking, not connected to any particular store. Do you see that as an issue when the apartment building is fully tenanted?
Not necessarily.
Those are obviously the prime spaces, and half of them aren't available by signage.
Well, they're, they're the prime spaces, I believe, for the, for the retail to the north, and you're correct, there's, there are four spaces on the western portion of the parking lot that are reserved for Chipotle. There are four ADA parking spaces, pretty much in the center of that bank, and on either side of that are two for a total of four signs that basically say 15-minute parking. And then, we also, as part of the Board of Adjustment approval for the veterinarian hospital, there are two spaces all the way to the east of that parking bank, which are for animal drop-off, so that people can pull up there and access their vehicles to drop off the animals. And then we have the remaining unrestricted parking. The only ones that are really specific to uses are the four for Chipotle, the two for the vet, and then the 15-minute are really for, you know, the other uses in the, in that retail space, someone coming in to get, you know, pick up their pizza or whatever can use those, those spaces. As far as parking for the residents, I believe that they could, you know, whether they park in this aisle or whether they park closer to the shopping center, I don't know that that's really going to be a difference. I do know in speaking with the applicant that they've had no complaints from the, from the existing tenants, I believe, even from the, the... the existing tenants, I believe, even from the, the new tenant that you have coming in with regards to the limitations.
And I, I just personally, practically thinking, I'm certainly not gonna go and park in the Chipotle spaces that are all the way down. I'm gonna take, go into the second row and park as close as I can to the building. I don't think that's, Chipotle spaces are even something someone's gonna wanna eye up. You're gonna come up all the way as close to the grocery store, the vet hospital, as you can to get to the building.
Yeah.
Okay, this point I'd like to make is that if you keep reserving more and more spaces, you're pushing people further and further away from the apartment. So, it'd be nice for the board, when you come in for formal site plan, to understand that either certain spaces will pop up with signs reserved for, for residents, or a certain more will reserve for the vet, reserved for the supermarket. The more you start doing that, the less accessible the spaces become, and it causes circulation problems. So, I would...
No, understood.
Recommend that you stop reserving spaces, please?
That's a fair point, thanks.
Yes.
Tom, Mr. Deckard?
Yeah.
On the, on the site, well, see, the, the prime parking areas that are in the back of the unit that are shaded in dark gray?
Yes.
Are they planned to be a reserved site, like one per tenant, or are they gonna be an open?
No, it's gonna be open. So, each tenant will be assigned, or a parking space will be assigned to a tenant, so that each of the forty-four will have at least one assigned parking space to the rear.
Close.
Correct. Some of them will have two, because they'll have the parking space and the garage that it sits in front of.
Right, I guess, my point was, it's not a free-for-all to get parking in the back there, at least has one spot per tenant, that's close.
Correct.
And my second part is, on the area right behind the vet there, that, I guess, is allocated for the employees of the veterinary hospital? Is that what that is?
Yes.
That's so that can't be used by the...
Well, that's correct, and that's the free up, again. When we came in for that, for the, the vet, it was also to put their employees in the back so that they weren't occupying spaces.
So, those are for employees only?
Yeah.
And that's marked?
Yes.
So, is, there's enough parking in the back, so each, at least one spot for all the tenants that live there will have at least one spot in the prime parking area?
Yes.
And then, twelve of them have two spots.
And twelve will have, I'm saying, but at least one.
And, and there's eighteen one-bedroom units, so...
Right.
There's a good chance that at least half of those eighteen units are gonna have one person.
Okay.
You got one point eight spots per one bedroom.
There you go.
Two per two.
You get half a car?
Two point one per three.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, at least they are dedicated to one.
Yes, no, they are, they are dedicated.
Will there be any thing for, you know, sometimes these developments, they have their assigned parking spots with a number, and then there's a designated visitor parking area or unassigned spots? Is there any reference to those, or are those just wherever is available?
I believe those would probably be where avail-, where it's available, because we do have, like, as I said, we have forty-five...
Sure.
That are back here that are not ADA and not in the garage. So, forty-four units, each one gets one of those. You know, they may have, at their own discretion, they may park their car in their, in the driveway if they have, or in the garage, if they have a garage in a, in a parking space. They could always park in their garage and have their visitor park, you know, in their parking space. But otherwise, you know, twenty, you know, there's, there's another twenty-six parking spaces that would be here for visitors and so forth. The other thing is, is that they may have visitors, you know, when the people are occupying the building, primarily it's gonna be, you know, evening to morning when they're, you know, when they're home, and then they're not gonna be here during, during the daytime for, you know, they're gonna go out to work. So, when they're here, and there's additional, there's, there's more opportunity to park here late at night because the shopping center isn't as, isn't functioning as much.
Yeah, but everybody goes shopping when they get home from work.
Sure.
You know, late at night is subjective, if you're talking ten or eleven o'clock. Maybe if you could explain for me, what is the general circulation for the veterinarian hospital and the grocery stores that relates to deliveries, truck deliveries, garbage removal, that sort of thing? How does that?
Okay.
Will they be going through the parking lot?
They will, for their deliveries, they will function as they do now.
Okay.
Okay. And that's the purpose of why there's this, this circular drive coming through. One of the things I can add is that there will be a dumpster dedicated specifically for the residences, and that will be located in this area. This is, this is two-way traffic coming around. But the loading area for the grocery store is in the southeast corner.
Correct.
You can see the, you can see a couple trailers there now. As far as loading for the vet, during the Board of Adjustment hearing, there's really, the deliveries there aren't really anything of substance. You know, typically, office supplies, medical supplies are not, certainly nothing like when this was all stop and shop.
So, what you're saying, will they come in through that controlled intersection to the north, drive around through the parking area of the tenant to get to the grocery store?
Right. The way that, the way that this loading area is set up now, the trucks come around, back in, load, and then they come out.
Okay.
Okay? And then, the patrons for the vet come in through the front, they're parking in the front and bringing in. And then, really, this is just for the employees to the rear. There is, I believe there's one remaining loading bay for the, for the vet, but again, that's, they're not gonna get tractor trailers, they're gonna get small box trucks.
But for garbage removal, you'll have garbage trucks going through at various different...
Correct, just as they are, yeah.
Through the development, okay.
Yeah, just as they are now.
Okay.
And the, the garbage trucks would still have to come through the development...
Yep.
Even to pick up the garbage from the, the residential dumpster.
I have a couple questions regarding pedestrian.
Yes.
I, I, I like the, the concept. You almost, you almost don't have to leave, you know? You have your, your gym and your, your groceries and, but I, I, I can't help but wonder, if I lived there, I'd wanna wander to the shopping center to the north for one, and then possibly I wanna maybe take a walk and go see a movie and walk to the south. So, I know there's sidewalks that'll connect to the south.
Yes.
But how would you handle pedestrian rather than people? I could just see them walking along the road while traffic is pulling in. So, is there any pedestrian access to the north to cut through instead of walking along the street where cars go? Will there be a, you know, a more of an, an access, accessible to the north? And then, is there a way, I would imagine, you'd have to walk down that strip to the Starbucks, and then sorta work your way to the sidewalk to go south?
To go south of...
So, maybe you could comment on the pedestrian?
Sure.
'Cause that, that's where I would see them going, is, you know, to, to the shopping, to the north, and to the south, and, well, going across the street to go get booze, that's, you know, they, they could do that too.
Right.
So, you really, you have everything right there, you don't have to drive.
Yeah, and, and I can, let me speak to that. The, you know, they're going to, this is a controlled intersection. This has a traffic light at it, which is the ideal location...
Which is great, yeah.
Where, where you want pedestrians to be crossing. You, it's better for them to cross here than it is for them to cross, you know, to go to ShopRite, to be crossing somewhere in here.
They're gonna cross in there anyway.
Well, I, there's nothing I can, we can do...
Right.
...to fix that. We, we certainly don't wanna encourage it.
Right.
And if we put in a walkway there, we're gonna encourage that pedestrian traffic to come up this way, and then you're gonna have vehicles that are, you know, making the right off of 206, accelerating and coming in, and then there's gonna be a person there. So, I'd rather not encourage someone to cross there and put them in harm's way.
So, so there's no way to kinda put a walkway along that northern rim of the property? And then, what's up there? Is that, is this like a paper road, or what's, what's this thing that goes across the top?
Here?
Yeah.
That's actually, there's a, there's a strip of property here that, that reaches back to a lot in the rear. That's not part of either this lot...
Oh, I remember, yeah, that's that actual road or driveway.
Yes.
Okay, so you can't cut across there?
So, we can't really cut across there, and then, even if we could cut across, we can't do improvements on ShopRite from the Nelson Corner property. So, our best bet is to bring it out to the intersection, and then it's controlled, you know, crosswalks and...
So, your, your, your property ends right at that northern part of where the, the pavement?
Correct. Yeah, right, right, right along this northern...
Right, okay.
Yep. So...
And to the south?
And to the south, you know, we're, we're hoping that they still cross this way. There is an existing, there's also an existing sidewalk, brick, brick pavers that go from 206 to the bank. In this area, again, we've got environmental constraints, and the road also sits up higher than the area on either side of it. So, we really don't have any room in there to put in a sidewalk, because that was one of the other suggestions that was kicked around early on in the process. So, this is really the only, you know, the best way for us to get out to 206.
Stay on that pedestrian theme. Have you contacted the Board of Ed to decide how the bus would pick up children at that event? Would they pull into the lot, or do you have to get to 206?
We have not had that discussion yet, but it's a very good point.
Think I would do that.
Good suggestion. Appreciate it.
Is there any type of rework that has to be done to the sanitary sewer system as it was designed way a long time ago for retail, now you have residents there?
Um, not from a capacity standpoint.
Okay.
The sanitary sewer in that area, I believe, is eight-inch lines, and they circle, they circle the property. We will have some modifications to the existing drainage, sanitary water lines, and other utilities, just by way of this layout. You know, we, we can't have, for example, there's some sanitary sewer that would be underneath the proposed building. We can't have the sanitary there, so we've, we have to reroute that around the building. But there's no capacity issue or anything like that. The side, the lines are more than adequate in size.
Okay, thank you.
So, with the traffic circulation, you know, around the perimeter, 'cause I know coming out by where the Chipotle is, and just kinda, you know, generally, I mean, right now, there's really no traffic back there at this point, but it is a little bit, you know, difficult site triangle there, and I'm just a little concerned, residents, once that's built, they're gonna come flying around there, and it's a, it is a little...
Which area, which area?
To the north.
In here?
Right, but when they're coming out, right...
So, when they're coming out of here?
Yep. Seeing cars coming from the right there, it's a little difficult. And I'm just wondering if there's, you know, maybe provisions to put, maybe speed bumps in there to just actually slow that traffic down, because it is, it is a little difficult, and, you know, a lot of...
I mean, that's something that we can, we can take a look at putting in some, some speed humps. You missed similar speed humps to what was recently installed over in Nelson Corner in front of ShopRite. We can certainly take a look at that.
You generally don't look to the right?
No, you don't. And, and when you do, you really don't have, you don't really get much, you know, you don't really have much of a view down there, because you're already halfway through that intersection.
When you're coming out here.
Yeah. I mean, you really have to go into the intersection to see what's coming from the right.
Do you consider possibly, and if it makes sense, to make it a one-way road, since you have that traffic pattern going around the loop anyway with, with your trucks?
Um, I don't know. I mean, we can talk to the traffic consultant and, and, and see if we wanna make it one way. There are positives and negatives to that, but we can certainly take a look at it.
Yeah, it was a, it's an interesting topic on the parking lots, just going back to the spots, and with Mr. Mesky's comment about not having too many reserved spots, I get that, but I was more concerned or thinking about, from the business perspective, and there's a couple of restaurants in there as well.
In the...
So, I'm sure that, like, the fifteen-minute couldn't apply to them, 'cause someone's gonna need an hour or two. So, I'm just thinking if, if ten or fifteen spots right in that corner are, you know, maybe they wouldn't be taken a lot by residents, but if they are, you know, restaurant guests, you know, might get pushed back to the third or fourth row on a consistent basis.
Okay.
And that could be a concern of theirs.
All right. Well, I think those are all, you know, valid concerns that I think we, as a team, are gonna sit down and discuss and make sure that, you know, we take a look at them. But as I mentioned before, the tenants so far haven't had an issue with those. But, you know, the idea of this, this hearing is that we can hear the comments.
Right.
We can go back and, you know, discuss them and approach them as best we can.
One more, just, I noticed the, there's a bunch of reserved spots for the veterinary facility in the back.
Yes.
And I think you said the drop-off is typically in the front. So, are those spots still needed, like, for longer term?
In the, in the back?
Right. Is that, if I see it right?
No, those, those spaces, there are...
Oh, for the employees, perhaps?
Those are for employees.
Okay, sorry.
Those are for the, the veterinary employees.
Yep.
Anything else?
The only other thing I was thinking about is, I don't know, the lighting with the, is it a twenty-four-hour veterinary facility, or?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
So...
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just thinking about the constant traffic of twenty-four hours there and the lighting.
Well, I think the, it would be open twenty-four hours, but my recollection from when we were at the Board of Adjustment, that's not gonna be their regular business hours. The late hours are for emergencies only. They're not gonna be scheduling appointments or anything like that, you know, in the, in the evening late hours. That's really supposed to be for emergency purposes, and they will have, you know, a minimal staff there at the time to serve, to serve emergencies.
Yeah, that's what I would think. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, then if we, Larry, if you wanna come up and describe the actual building and what it looks like?
Okay, so, to the record, would you take your name, last name, or your... My name is Lawrence Appel, A-P-P-E-L, Principal of Appel Design Group Architects. We're located in Livingston, New Jersey.
To help for discussion, I brought some smaller copies of the rendering.
I could hand them over.
Would, if I can, if we can hand those out, it may be a little easier for discussion. And do you have copies of the architectural exhibits in here?
Yes.
Okay. I did have a revised copy of this exhibit, so I can distribute it, but I would first wanna, I, I think it'd be appropriate to bring that up with regard to some of the comments on the expert report, because part of this was to address these comments. So, the, the building is rather simple in, in design. We've created four pods. Each of these pods are designed to create a footprint that has four units per floor, three stories, and the building is designed this way for several reasons. Number one is it creates a situation where it developed a courtyard at the front. We thought that was very beneficial for pedestrian access and to create a sense of place for this building. The other thing about this is it, for us is, for a building of this size, it created a way that the residents, there were, there were not single entries and lobbies that were shared by a lot of people. It kind of brought down the, the scale and sense of, of place as well. So, in doing this, the other reason was for site purposes, it allowed us to step the building and work along with the, with the site a little bit better. Along the back, the roadway that was discussed at the rear of the buildings was providing access, and by stepping the building, it allowed us to incorporate garages at the backside. So, not every unit will have a garage, and garages we put where it was appropriate design-wise and topography-wise and access-wise, but it provided an extra amenity for, for some of the units. So, what we've done is we've looked at the, the ordinance. The rendering that you have shows a typical elevation view of the building. What we've done is we've provided a, provided on the ground floor, a, a tag that says A to show where the view of the elevation is. So, that... So that's actually rear elevation, but all the elevations are designed to be the same. So if there's no front and rear, they're, they're kind of have a similar design on all four sides. And we thought that was beneficial as well for this type of building. Excuse me? So what I'd like to do is address a little bit building height-wise. And I'd like to bring, one of the comments raised by Mr. Maseki was that the, there was a question about height. I'd like to take a revised drawing. This is S K zero eight. It's identical to the, the drawing that you have with the exception that I did update the, I did update this drawing to reflect height measured from average grade to the high point of the, the roof. So this is essentially some misunderstanding on our end is we had carefully read the ordinance and we had understood from the ordinance that the, that the building height would be measured to the roof eve, not to the high point. We have since been instructed that that is not the intent of the ordinance. The, it's the intent to measure the building to the high point of the roof. So we have several issues on here of how to make this really work. And we have the building right now, as measured from average grade to the high point of the roof, is forty-eight feet, which is three feet above the maximum height of forty-five feet per the ordinance. So we have a lot of requirements. Part of this is, is setting up typical floor-to-floor heights of nine feet, which is typical for these apartments and pre-cut studs. A floor thickness of eighteen inches, which is common for many of the apartments that we're, we're doing as well. And then the ordinance requires a six-on-twelve roof pitch. So constructing a six-on-twelve roof pitch for most apartment buildings, and these are actually rather narrow in, in width. They're only fifty-nine feet front to rear, as opposed to many of the other apartment buildings that are in excess of seventy or seventy-five feet deep. So when you take and you kind of work that geometry, especially that you have requirements on the heel of the trusses to have what's called an energy truss, is we end up adding up all these pieces and we're coming up above the forty-five. Now, in addition, we have a tie-in to average grade. And we have pushed these buildings as far as we can tight to grade. It's done for two reasons. Number one, for handicap accessibility. But we do have some topography along the, the rear and there, so there, there is some average grade considerations. And if you take the average grade consideration around the building, you have approximately one foot four out of a tie-in to, to grade. And this is something that is, has to be, you know, worked out with the, with the engineer as well. This is an approximation at this point. So when we add all of these up, we're above the forty-five. It's a small amount. It's a, it's below a ten percent deviation, so it stays within the jurisdiction of this board. However, we were trying to brainstorm and say, what do we do with this? Well, so obviously, one way is just to confirm that the height is measured to the high point of the roof as opposed to the, the eve line. And then number two is what strategies can we incorporate to lower the roof height without impacting the design at all? We feel that the pitched roof in here looks nice. It looks appropriate. We like the six-on-twelve. We think that's a great feature. We're very supportive of that. We, however, we have come up with an alternative idea. And the alternative idea, I can pass around another drawing. This is S K zero nine, showing one of the strategies that we've come up with that to run by the board. And we're looking to, to, to try and get some feedback and some ideas on what to, what to do here. The, one of the, the other items in here that we had originally planned for was lofts tied up into the roof configuration. Based on the comments that we received, we said that if these lofts are not possible, let's just pull the lofts out. The project is, as much as we were loving to see the lofts and the, one of the reasons we put the lofts in there is because the roof pitch allowed that height-wise, we were trying to get some, some use inside the roof. We were not expanding the footprint or making the building higher or anything like that. We were just trying to utilize space that existed. If that is a problem with the ordinance, that would be removed. And on the revised drawing, S K zero eight, we've in fact removed that from, from the drawings. We're still left with the height. And I'd love to hear just feedback and some direction or ideas on how the best-
I thought with the S K oh nine, we resolved the height and we created a different issue with the pitch?
Correct. So this, the, on S K zero nine, what we've done with this alternate building section is we've left the twelve-on-six roof pitch and then created a pivot point where we transitioned to twelve-on-four, only on the upper portion of the roof. We believe that this shift in geometry would not be easily noticed. And we feel that it can be integrated well with the architectural dimensions and form of the, of the roof. And with this configuration, we can meet the forty-five feet. So it's just another strategy. I am not quite sure as, well, the board would consider this some type of design waiver or something like that because the, the ordinance does call for a minimum of six-on-twelve pitched roofs. But then continues to, after the discussion of the pitched roofs, where it says manser roof types are prohibited. It says interior flat treatments may be allowed if the applicant is able to show that all observable facades have pitched roofs and that all rooftop equipment is completely screened from public view. So there is some language in there that suggests that our, that this concept may be within the spirit of, of the discussion on the six-on-twelve pitched roofs, but are happy to entertain any other thoughts or, or direction the board may have on this issue. I don't, if there are specific questions, I, I can certainly address them. I didn't necessarily want to go through, get into the weeds of materials and colors and all those things and just kind of concentrate on, on, it seems like the height is, is the, the big issue that we have on the architecture.
Chairman, if I may, just some technical issues. The six-on-twelve, which section of the ordinance are you referencing there?
I'm referencing-
The ASDO or in the T C?
I'm, I'm reading from the T C Town Center District. One eighty-eight dash one, one, three point five. And I'm on item four, building design. And under that is B. E six, minimum six-on-twelve roof pitches.
The other point, we generally measure height, it's usually the average grade at the front of the building. So it's obviously, this, this isn't your typical frontage type of building. So you're, you kind of have four or five fronts actually. So which, which, so I don't know, which, which side you pick is sort of whatever works best, I suppose.
Although I would, I would, I would look at a building like this and I would say the, contrary to normal buildings where it's addressing a street, I would say the courtyard, I would consider the, the, if I had to pick a front, I would say the courtyard side is, is, is the front. The most logical front.
Okay, so on this S K oh nine, you were able to get it to forty-five feet, it looks like? Is that right?
With, with the transition from twelve-on-six to twelve-on-four, within the upper portion of the trusses.
Okay, and you have taken out the lofts?
The lofts are removed, yes.
So you don't have the three and a half stories, it's back down to three?
Correct. So the loft would have been in that first part.
Right, 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 right. Okay. With the initial scenario, we had the forty-eight feet. Were there any of the facades at forty-five feet? So I know, is it given the grade differentials?
Well, there's, there's only a small, a small tie-in to, let me bring a copy that had that. The, there's a small differentiation as we're moving clockwise from the left-hand side. The second pod is, has a slightly higher finished floor. And I don't have, from, from the drawings, I can't, I can't read the, the numbers that they're, they're very small. But there, that is slightly higher, but it's, it's a very small amount. You're, you're not talking several feet. It's not going to make it conforming, but it's a little bit closer.
Okay. That's, when they come in with their formal plan, that's going to be a call for the board, obviously. If they can't meet forty-five feet, it would be a C variance that they'd be requesting. If, if they chose to go that route, then it would be up to the board to weigh their testimony at that time, whether or not it's warranted or not.
I mean, do you guys have any reaction? I mean, when you look at it, would, do you have a preference on the pitch? I mean, we prefer the higher pitch. We like that pitch that goes to the forty-eight. I think it looks a nicer design, but that's just personal and-
So assuming you lose the loft, I'm assuming these go away, these little windows on the roof? Is that the loft windows in your rendering that you gave us?
No, the, I think the, I think they will, they will remain there because I think that decoratively, we, we like the look of, of these dormers. They will just be bulk dormers instead of functional dormers.
And Mr. Maseki, the, the ordinance is to the top of the roof, not to these pergolas that are on top?
No, those are architectural features on the top. They're okay.
So that doesn't count?
They can go higher.
They can go higher.
And so one of the questions that I have, and, and maybe if I'm understanding, is there's chapter one eighty-eight of the Land Use and Development Article X, Architectural and Site Design Overlay Zone.
Yes.
There is reference to an eve definition that says the junction of a wall of a building and an overhanging roof. In order to encourage pitched roofs, the designated maximum building height may be measured to the eve, not to the top of the roof. Would this be able to be applied in this?
The, the language in the T C district would prevail. The ASDO are, are design guidelines, basically, and they would, they're waivers. If you don't meet one of those, it's a waiver. But the prevailing requirement is the language in the district chapter itself.
And the T C district, I did not see, does that say, did that have an individual definition for either eve or how building height was being measured?
That I'm not sure, but trust me, we measure to the top of the ridge line.
Which is, which is right from the ordinance. I, I just was trying to, to put these together and that's why our drawings were dimensioned to the eve on the original because we had, we had thought that was the, the, the intent on here and consistent with that. Trying to encourage pitched roofs as part of the, the district. Is there any feedback that we would have that to, to better understand what direction that the board would advise? Because, you know, I'm, I'm trying to, in the trenches, I'm trying to make this work and trying to make it look nice and trying to get, to maximize, you know, to the best we can all of the ordinance provisions.
With, with the understanding, again, that this is an informal hearing and nothing is binding on either side.
David, just curious, what do we have currently from a design perspective in Town Center right now?
What, this, this is the Town Center-
No, no, I'm just saying what, has any of the, the buildings or anything that's perhaps right now in the pipeline?
Well, most of the existing buildings really, you know, are, they precede the Town Center District. So you've got, you know, our strip centers, they're basically one-story.
Right.
So they don't even, they're not, actually, they would be not conforming because you have to have a minimum of two stories in the Town Center. So it's hard to say, how does this compare to other Town Center District? It doesn't because it's one of the newer buildings and it would be, you know, at forty-five feet, it would be conforming. And three stories, it would be conforming to what the Town Center District is calling for. So anything similar to this that comes before the board, any new developments, they would all be required to be at least two stories, maximum three and forty-five feet.
What is the height of the existing structures that are, of the buildings you have now that, that these buildings are behind? Do you know what the heights of those are?
I, I do, I do not have, I have, I walked this and photographed it, but I did not measure the heights.
The building to the north is two, it's two stories, basically.
They're two stories, but they're tall.
But they're tall.
Yeah, I'll say, but, but they're not single, they're taller than the super-
I guess my point is if, is something that at forty-eight feet, just for argument's sake, is going to stand out because it's significantly higher than what's existing already versus a, a minor fluctuation that from, from six hundred feet or whatever it is from two oh six, it's not going to be noticeable is what I'm asking. Just-
I get the point. Will, will the existing buildings sort of mask or ask or scale down the, the visual?
I'd be surprised if those retails, those two-story retails aren't close.
I, and I would think that they are, but I, I don't want, I don't want to throw a guess or a number out there. I'd rather bet it than, than look at the numbers. And when we did, we, we were thinking is that the height of this structure was going to be quite close to the height of the existing building. You know, in perspective, when you take a building like this and you look at it from the distance, you know, a small, you know, one, two, three feet is, is almost not meaningful and-
It's nominal, for sure.
You know, the, the intent in here, that I think having a six-on-twelve roof means that you're, you're going to have a prominent brow to the building. And, and for me, that's an aesthetic. So I think what's here makes, you know, makes sense. If this building were designed differently and it was a deeper building, I'm not sure you can pull off three stories. You know, it would, it would, you know, so, and I, I think the design of this and the, and the ordinance seems to support the, the three-story with pitched roof configuration.
I, I think it's also far enough from the highway, two oh six, that, and there's a lot of trees and everything else. And the other buildings at three feet, I don't think should make too much of a difference.
I guess you could if you had to remove the little architectural things on the top, if you-
Oddly, those are conforming.
Well, I meant if, if you, to make the building appear to be less taller than it is- Well, I meant if, if you, to make the building appear to be less taller than it is, you know, but, uh, I, that's why I was asking the, the height of the buildings already, that would probably be almost unrecognizable that, with that three foot, that, in my opinion, would be that noticeable from the naked eye. David, does that create any kind of standard, other than the fact that he would have to ask for a C variance and anything that might come down the road?
Need to be precedent? No, it doesn't set, each is, each variance is site-specific.
Okay.
We just did that, uh, the other ones, the Hillsborough crossings, right? Were they three stories or was that?
Those two.
Two, okay.
So the, I guess one of the questions in here is that, um, is, would this, uh, change in the pitch roof be considered a variance or a design waiver?
Should have been a waiver. It's, because it's in the, the rule we usually follow, if the language is in the district chapter, it's, it's a variance. If it's in the ASDO, which is more of a design chapter, it's a waiver. So the fact that it's in the district chapter, it would be a, a, on the six-on-twelve, it would be a variance, a C.
And did I hear you said that, that, uh, TC ordinance prohibits Mansard roofs? That would, you said, that would...
I believe that's what you read.
Uh...
I believe so.
There's a, um, um, there's a, uh, language in there that's, uh...
Specific to Mansard?
Yeah, Mansard-type roofs are prohibited.
Because that would be an easy fix, sort of, okay.
I mean, to, you know, you mean to create a false Mansard at the, uh, the upper floor?
At the upper part and put like a, like a Princeton-style railing around the top, like it would be like a artificial deck, so to speak, similar to the mansions.
The, the problem with the Mansard is typically with the Mansard, to make all that work, you either have a flat spot where you have a changing pitch that usually goes down to one or two-on-twelve. So it would be, I think, a much more noticeable deviation from the intent of the pitch roof. I think what, what we proposed here as an alternative seems to be, uh, as close a, you know, we were hoping that that was going to be a waiver rather than a, that variance. But, you know, we're, we're supportive that, that both of those would, um, uh, look, look fine and, and complement the architecture.
Off the roof topics real quick, the COA units that you have proposed in here, would they be on the first floor, second floor, third floor?
So we have distributed the COA units, in most cases, we try and stack them so that when we develop the units, we try and get everything structurally to, uh, to stack. So we have, uh, the COA units, if you, um, look at the building matrix on the lower right-hand corner, it shows that we have, um, uh, COA units in, um, the first, second, and third, um, floor. This is just a preliminary, uh, kind of look right now. When we get involved and kind of figure out what we have to do height-wise and stuff like that, is, um, when we took the lofts out, we may juggle some of the units around, but it's, uh, generally pretty, uh, pretty well-integrated into the, uh, the design of the building.
Yeah, so you're not going to know which ones are the COA units from the outside.
Okay.
Yeah, and they got them labeled here. You can see the little color written.
I don't have my glasses on, so I'm reading nut suckers. Forgot them.
They're set, they're set up for big twenty-four by thirty-six, it cheats out.
Yeah, I could barely make out the forty-eight there, and that was, that was a lucky guess.
Lucky guess?
Yeah.
So I guess, getting back with the roof, you're probably still looking for direction, and it sounds like it's a mix right now. I think maybe it might be worthwhile to see how far this would protrude above, I think, the existing stores.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, some sort of, uh, visual showing the relationship of this building with the buildings in front of it. So as you're looking at it, you can actually, what, what will you actually see above the existing commercial buildings? That would probably be helpful.
An elevation, so to speak, from the street?
And even, and even, and just, just my gut feeling is that when you see this building that's so far back and it's kind of tucked into, um, the kind of rear portion of this re-entrant kind of corner where the, where the, uh, where the two shopping, uh, retail buildings meet, is, uh, architecturally, I'd, I'd almost want to see some of this out there to kind of create some architectural punctuation and see it. So, um, I'm, I'm, as much as I'm happy to, to find out the heights in here, I'd probably almost want to applaud that it was higher. So rather than, than, than tuck it in and not see, I think, on an architectural and planning basis, I would think that would be preferred. But, um, again, at, at this point, I, I have to just bring you that information so that you can kind of digest it and make an informed decision.
Yeah, because I, I don't think the feeling is wanting it to be tucked, it's just, we're going to assume both alternatives, it's going to be above the commercial buildings and just want to make sure, you know...
Not too far.
Not too far above, but I think, but, but, but I think we, you know, I mean, at least I concur, I speak for everybody else, that, you know, I would agree that you want to see it come above, it's just how much.
Aesthetically, I like the plan, the way it looks.
Great, thank you.
And, uh, and this is just my opinion, um, and...
I agree.
And the fact that, as, as Dave said over here, the fact that it's sitting in town center and people can walk to almost anything from these apartments is great. The concern I have is two, is when I say it was about the busing, number one, and obviously that, with the height of the building it not being too high, um, so that's just my, my two, my two major concerns. The rest of it, I think, is a great, great look.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fall, I have a question. Uh, on the building unit matrix, you're talking about sixteen one-bedroom units, nine ones and seven one-bedroom plus den.
Yes.
What are we, two parts, what are we going to do to attempt to ensure that the one-bedroom plus den don't end up being two-bedroom as they notoriously become? And the second, are you proposing a one-bedroom plus den in the affordable housing mix? Because if the answer is yes, the answer is no.
Well, we, well, we were, we were not providing a one-bedroom plus den as part of the affordable mix.
That's good.
Uh, the, um, issue with regard to the dens is we typically look at this as, uh, an house code or extra space or room. We typically try not to, um, make it look and feel like a bedroom. So we often will put a, um, a wide opening on this, um, often not putting, uh, conventional swing doors. We will often not put a closet in there, uh, and it will not have a window, so, um, we're...
None of which necessarily guarantee discouragement.
Under, understood. We, in, in, we, we do a lot of apartments and as part of doing this is we found that some of the things that come up in the feedback we've gotten from some developers is that, um, a lot of these apartments have just an open, uh, living area open to the kitchen. So someone has a large dining room and wants to have kind of a segregated dining area. Sometimes the, this den provides a place that becomes either a dining area. And often, another usage is people who, um, work from their, from their home is allow somebody to have a desk with a computer and be able to have a little bit of sense of privacy that it's not sitting in their open living room or, uh, in, you know, a corner of their bedroom. So we feel that as much as I understand the concern of the, of it becoming a de facto, uh, second bedroom is that there is a defined, you know, need that we've seen for, um, for having an extra nook or space or stuff like this. And typically, you know, if it's, you know, these are not large rooms, they're often, um, nine or ten feet by, you know, by the same or maybe a little bit larger, so they're not, um, you know, large spaces and typically don't have, um, windows, although depending on where they are, it's possible that they, um, that they could, you know, because some of the, some of these dens are happening on, let's say, a unit that's happening on a corner could have a, a window. When it happens on the interior unit, it normally wouldn't have a window.
I mean, Eric, is that something that could actually be put into a lease agreement?
It could, I think the issue, the issue, the, the problem is who's going to enforce it? I mean, we're going to literally start going through, um, the building and knocking on people's doors where we have one-bedroom plus den to see if they're actually using them as two bedrooms. I think, at least initially, the way to consider it, and obviously will leave this to the applicant, is to try to, as much as possible, while providing what they've indicated they think is what the desire of potential residences is, is to attempt in the same manner to discourage it from finding its way into it.
So I guess...
I realize it's been a number of years since I've been out of school, but ten by ten in many dorm rooms is typical for bedrooms. It's not like, and without, with or without windows. And I think the concern is that we're going to end up putting more peo, I mean, putting more people in these, in these seven bedr, in these seven units than we necessarily intended. But I'll leave that up to you all to deal with accordingly.
Yeah, no, I agree, ten by ten is easily a bedroom size, so, um, you know, whether or not that den could be significantly reduced if you feel that there's a need to create, like, you know, a, a little office in there or just keep it wide open as a great room, you know, pseudo-studio type, and let them put up a, you know, a divider, you know, if they want to create an office that way.
Okay.
Quick question. I'm just trying to understand the view, is this from the road or...
So if you, if you look at the, um, I'm drawing SK zero eight and you look at the proposed ground floor, we've shown the rear access drive and there's a little, um, A with an arrow on it and it's showing, that's, um, showing that elevation. So the left side of the elevation is the part that's a little bit darker in color and the part that fades back where the garages are is set back a little bit, and that's why we kind of shaded it so that it's not quite as vibrant.
I think the question is about this, but if I'm looking at the building on the plan...
Okay.
Is the front elevation like toward the building or is it the rear elev, the rear?
It's actually the side.
So it's from the side, from the west?
Is this one?
If you were looking at the plan, it's, it's, it's from the road looking, uh...
Is it this one?
From the parking area looking in.
It's from the ninety-degree parking at the rear of the building that we're looking from.
So if I can show right over here, it's from this area looking backward the building. So I would probably look at that as saying that it's the, it's the rear face of the, of the building.
Right.
If you're looking at a plan, you may say it's the right-hand side or...
Yeah, I was just trying to visualize it from the parking lot from two oh six, that's the back.
Yes, yes, farthest away from two oh six.
Right.
Um, as I, as I mentioned, all the sides of the building are designed to be, um, identical, so...
Essentially, this is going to look the same lengthwise.
On, on all sides, correct. Same materials, same architecture, same proportions, it's, uh, quite similar as you walk, go around the building. The joists and jobs all changed, but it's, it's all, there's, there's not a, a backside that's bland, it's, it all...
I, I think the question that I was asking, if I'm looking at it from the parking lot toward the back, what will I be seeing when I look towards the back? And the answer is that here.
Well, you'll kind of, I'd say this...
Similar, there's no garages on that side, just garage, two garages here, you know? So we'll, we can always, we'll have an elevation showing each one so you can see what it looks like.
When this goes to the, um, we will probably only have one rendered side, but we will show an architectural elevation of each side of the, uh, of the building.
Yeah, and just, you know, from end to end, from the parking lot, it might actually be wider than this, right? This is one side, but...
So, um, there's a dimension showing the, the face of each side, so, uh, as you go around, uh, left to right, going around the left-hand side is a hundred and twenty-three foot six, um, the, call it the, uh, the rear side is a hundred and seventy-six, the right-hand side is a hundred and forty-seven, and then as you go around each side of the courtyard, there are actually smaller faces to the building.
So the smallest side face is what's actually facing two oh six, the one twenty-three?
Right.
And the reduction of units is made up by the garages in the back?
Uh, correct, when we kind of laid this out, we, uh, tried to balance the, uh, both the, uh, topography as well as the number of units and getting the garages in here and, and played around with stepping and, uh, this seemed to be the best fit.
The discussion, it indicated it was four by four by three, and the proposal for the building is forty-four units, so obviously you got to figure out a way to...
I have, I see that you have, so there's no elevator, it's all stairs to the three sites, and you have stairs going up into it. So is any of these units ADA accessible?
So, uh, the Fair Housing Act and the barrier pre-subcode would dictate that, uh, the ground floors of each of these buildings would have, uh, accessible units. So, uh, we would have, um, accessible entrances, um, either from the, uh, courtyard side or the, uh, the garage side. The only building where topography makes that somewhat difficult is the, uh, the, the right-hand most, um, pod, call it, which is what we have, the elevation, is the rear entrance has a number of steps, which is a requirement agreed, but the front side is, um, is, uh, accessible. So, um, all of the ground floor units will be accessible, the other units are going to be a similar configuration but would not be able to be accessed, uh, would have to be accessed via stairs.
Is there a requirement component, a number that need to be available?
No. Even if we add, you know, the way the code reads is that if you only have one unit on the ground floor, you would only need to may have one accessible unit. So we have a little less than, um, uh, a third of, uh, of the overall units that would be, uh, accessible.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
We're good?
Looks good.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
You too.
So with that, David, anything else?
Just scheduling, uh, the next meeting is scheduled for February fourteenth, but we have nothing on the agenda, so our, the board may want to cancel that, but we do...
But it gets Valentine's Day off, so...
There you go.
But the business meeting on February twenty-eighth, we do want to keep on, there will likely be an ordinance for the, uh, the board to review it that time. So you might, you might want to cancel the fourteenth, but we should definitely keep the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth, I won't be here.
So it's, it's another ordinance that's coming down?
Yes.
Just so the board is aware, this is going to be the year of the ordinance. A meeting will probably not go by where you are not going to be looking at an ordinance in some measure, in some form.
Thanks for the warning.
So, you want to cancel the fourteenth?
Yes, so do I, I need a motion to cancel the meeting of the fourteenth?
So moved, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, the...
Anybody else on the Mr. Scobbo who is not available on the twenty-eighth, please advise. Mr. Maskey's office will be, will need people here for what will be another referral of a very important item.
Okay.
Yes, twenty-eighth, correct. I will be back.
Okay, so with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, good night, everybody, see you in a few weeks.